Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Being seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Board and the Finance Committee to order. The Planning Board will take up their articles first and then adjourn to Room Nine, is it? Okay. To continue their meeting. If you do wish to speak, please go to a microphone, state your name and your address. Thank you. Mike?
Good evening. We'll start with Article 28, to see if the Town of Wilmington will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington revised by adding a new Chapter Five, Section 48, comprehensive stormwater management bylaw. I'll turn that over to you, Carol.
Thank you. The reason that this is coming forward at this time is that it is part of the compliance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. It's a federal mandate under EPA. It also helps us to comply with the town's comprehensive water resource management plan that we had approved a couple of years ago. What it does is it attempts to assist us in water quality by reducing flooding and increasing infiltration of stormwater back into the ground so that it nourishes the Ipswich River rather than flowing directly out into the ocean. The bylaw was developed in conjunction with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, who received a grant to assist four communities in preparing stormwater management bylaws. Wilmington was one of the four. MAPC met with the department heads in town who are generally involved with community development. So that's the DPW, Planning Conservation, Water and Sewer, Building Inspector, and I'm sure I've left at least one person out, if not more. But a large group of folks sat and met with MAPC to work through this bylaw. The highlights of the bylaw are that it's a two-tiered process. Properties that are disturbing 10,000 square feet or more will be required to do a full permit. And this is not cumulative disturbance. So if a house is being constructed on site and it disturbs less than 10,000 square feet, the trigger for a full permit isn't met. If your home is in existence and you decide to put an addition on that disturbs less than 10,000 square feet, additional on your lot, additional to what was disturbed when the house was put up, that does not trigger the full permit. It does trigger a minor permit that we'll talk about in a minute. So any project that undergoes site plan review with the Planning Board or is involved in subdivision control will very likely require a full permit. And those folks currently are supplying almost all of the material that would be required to be produced to do the stormwater management permit now, under the new bylaw. They're already doing that. The second tier is the simple stormwater management permit, and it's for any activity that disturbs or alters less than 10,000 square feet. It's a permit that can be handed out administratively. You would come into the Planning Board office, fill out an application, provide a sketch plan of your property, estimate how much land you're disturbing, answer a few other questions that would be involved in the application. We'll circulate that application among the very same people that developed the bylaw. And then within two weeks' time, a permit would be granted through the Planning Board office. It doesn't require a public hearing. There's no fee involved. It is just done administratively in the office. There are exemptions to this bylaw as well. The things that are generally exempted are agricultural uses, landscaping. If you're increasing the area of your grass on your lot, that would be exempt. Driveways, going from a gravel driveway to a paved driveway or increasing the size of your driveway would not involve a permit at all. Fencing of your property, utility service lines, emergency stormwater repairs, decks, patios, walkways, sheds, swimming pools, tennis courts, and septic system replacements all would not trigger. Even the small permit wouldn't be triggered unless you were doing a massive project that involved a lot of land. If you're putting on an addition of more than 600 square feet, the footprint is more than 600 square feet, that would trigger a simple permit. There will be regulations. This bylaw is about three pages right now. Once the bylaw is passed at town meeting, we will, the Planning Board will have a public hearing to discuss regulations for implementing the bylaw. And that process will probably take several meetings, but it is the nuts and bolts of how it's administered. We do have a draft of regulations that are up on the website now, and those are available for you to start looking at any time you wish. But there, that's up, all of those regulations are up for discussion, as long as they don't affect the meat of the bylaw that get, if it's passed at town meeting. And the guidance for this particular bylaw is the Stormwater, Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook that is also online under the DEP site. And I think I've hit most of the highlights, so perhaps we could take some questions.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak on this article?
Hi. I'm Kristin Costa with LA Associates. And as a member of the building community in town, five middlesex F, as a member of the building community in town, we have some concerns, and most of them wrap around the threshold of 10,000 square feet. In other respects, the bylaw seems to model state regulations and federal which have a threshold of, or as far as design and construction, yet for the threshold of disturbance, that those guidelines talk about an acre, and the town has looked to lower that to 10,000 square feet. And this isn't a concern so much for large projects. We, as Carol mentioned, we're already doing those, you know, meeting those regulations. However, for single lots in town, redevelopment, homeowner additions maybe that are larger than 600 square feet in footprint, these are all going to be subject to this permit, which will become cumbersome and costly. It also, what it also does is will subject any full permits, owners that, or, you know, developers, whomever, that fall in that to an appeal to Superior Court if, for instance, that a butler is unhappy with what's going on. So between that and the permit itself, it's creating an additional layer of permitting that's cumbersome and costly for a single-family lots in town, and we feel that's extensive. What we would like you to consider is to increase the disturbance something closer to the acre. It would bump these lots out and into the simple permit so that there would still be that, they would still be filing, but it would be under the simple, and leave the more onerous regulations to the larger projects.
This is a comment that has occurred at some of our information meetings as well, and certainly will be discussed by the Planning Board later on this evening.
Okay, we'll move on to Article 30. Article 30 is to see if the Town of Wilmington will vote to instruct the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation substantially as follows. The provisions of Chapter 268B of the General Laws shall be applicable to the following offices in the Town of Wilmington: Town Manager, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and the Board of Appeals. Petition, please.
Yes. All this does, it mirrors the state legislation, and it says that those boards that have been named in the article must do a financial disclosure. And that would be the Planning Board, Board of Appeals, the Manager, and the Board of Selectmen. And I'll answer any questions anyone might have.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, any of the towns or cities currently doing it?
We have a bill that will encompass every city and town in Massachusetts. Problem with that bill, and I'm one of the filers of that bill, the hearing is to be held very shortly, so yes, it will apply to, the bill that's in there now will apply to every town that goes through in the state legislature.
Those boards? For all those boards?
It will be for every board in all of those communities.
Okay.
And of course, as it goes through the legislative process, those will be rewritten and redrafted and committed. So what comes out might be substantially different than what was filed. We were advised to file all of it, and that's what we did. But this is separate and distinct. This applies to Wilmington, and to Wilmington and only to those parties that have been named in the article.
Any reason why?
Why not?
Why only these boards, Mr. Mocelli?
We figured that we'd start with these boards, and let's see how it goes.
Why these boards and not other boards in town that may have even elected officials?
You're talking about the school committee, because with the school committee, let's single out the school committee. For the school committee, you have a real serious problem in getting people to run for that committee. And we felt that we'd start with just these four. But if you want to, you know, if you want to talk about expanding it, I'd be more than delighted to file something at a later meeting. Just give me a call. Any other calls? Yes.
I can't figure why the Finance Committee has not been listed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Why wasn't the Finance Committee listed?
Let me tell you, we just didn't include the Finance Committee. But like, I'll say what I said earlier. If you feel they should be, then by all means, give me a call later, and if we're successful with this, we'll file an amendment at a later town meeting.
Can you explain to me, the 268B really deals with elected officials using the Planning Board. Since we're an appointed board, we're not elected. When it's not a paying position, it's a voluntary position. How does 268B apply?
In the regs, it will talk about boards that are voluntary and not compensated. So those will be covered also in the final legislation.
So why do we?
But let me say this to you. I served on the Planning Board for three years, and I served as a selectman for 12 years. So I have served as a local official. You know, when we filed this originally in the legislature, there was a lot of negativism on it relative to the, I'm talking about the state officials. That's when I first got elected many years ago. And the attitude at that time was, it's needed. You know, full disclosure, put the spotlight on everything, and there were no accusations. It's just that something that's worked well in the state, and it should work well on a local level.
Well, if there's going to be a state bill, why do we need a local bill?
Because if the state bill doesn't go through, at least we've got that local piece of legislation.
Is there a similar petition being filed in Tewksbury?
Nope. The bill that's in the legislature right now would cover Tewksbury.
So why, so as a representative to both communities, why did you only select Wilmington?
I live in Wilmington. I, a ten-town meeting, ten-town meeting in Tewksbury, too. There was no special reason. I live here, and I thought this would be a good thing to do.
So is there a clamor at the State House saying that this is a law that's really needed? I mean, is there, are you getting inundated with letters from people saying that this is something that's required? I don't understand the necessity of this. What is going on in Wilmington that is inappropriate or isn't working?
You might be reading something into this that I don't read into it. All this is, all this is is disclosure.
Well, when I'm reading into it as an appointed person who volunteers his time, you want to know my finances, my wife's finances, my kid's finances? What relevancy does that have for me to sit on this board and use my professionalism to assist with the community I live in? How is that relevant?
We've all done that. So let me tell you why it's re, let me tell you why it's relevant.
Good people that keep doing it, don't you?
Let me tell, let me answer the question. Let me tell you why it's relevant. It's relevant not so much as to the income. It's relevant as to the interest. What other financial interests do you have? And I'm not saying you have any. You and I have spoken many times in the past. I'm not saying you have any. But I think if somebody is sitting at town meeting, or somebody goes before a board, and all of a sudden, there's an issue that's being discussed that affects them, they really want to know if there's any other interest on that board relative to that article.
Well, I think speaking for the Planning Board, they could ask. I mean, I don't see, I mean, again, it seems extremely intrusive to, especially to single out these boards in one town. I mean, the Town Manager's on there, we already vote on his salary at town meeting, so.
You know, you keep harping on that issue. This is not directed at any particular person. This is directed at that position and those boards. And it makes an awful lot of sense. And I'll say it again. There's a bill in the legislature right now, and I'm one of the co-sponsors on that bill. And in fact, I don't know how many other sponsors there are on that bill, that mandates it for every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Well, I guess you're right. I can't get over the fact that it implies impropriety.
It does not imply.
It does.
You're reading that into it.
Well, maybe I agree. Well, that's the way I'm taking it.
I've known you for years. I'm not implying any impropriety in your part at all.
The fact that it's limited to.
You know, these are the same arguments we had in the legislature when we put this vote. And I'd hate to be without that today. Yes.
You indicated that the school committee is not included because they have such difficulty coming up with people to serve.
I know what you're going to say.
I need to suggest it's not that much easier for Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Board of Appeals to get people to step forward, especially quality people to step forward and assume these responsibilities.
Let's see what happens. Yes.
Mr. Mocelli, two questions. Why don't we just wait and see what the state does? If you're not willing to sponsor a bill for both Tewksbury and Wilmington, it doesn't make any sense to rush ahead, as I see it.
Let me say that, first of all, it isn't that I'm not willing to file a bill for both communities. The one in the, in the state legislature will take a lot of time, and we thought we'd get this on the books.
The second piece of that is that, you know, many of us are on these boards because we're not interested in being in, quote, "politics."
Go ahead. You and I know each other too well. Go ahead.
Well, let me say it again. Many of us aren't interested in being in politics, so we serve in these boards. And I think when you start to do some stuff where you have to campaign for these jobs and submit the kind of information you're talking about, then probably people won't do this job.
And, you know, they said the same thing about the legislature. And really, it didn't affect it at all. People line up to run for that position. And, whoa, whoa, can I finish? And I will say this. I'm not coming from inexperience. I've served on the Planning Board, and I've also served as a selectman. And there was never any lack of good quality, as you put it, candidates.
I guess we would disagree about how many quality people run for the legislature since there were many unopposed seats, so I don't know. Again, it seems unnecessary. Anyone else have anything to say?
Look, can I, can I retort to that? When you talk about there are many folks who run unopposed, there are many folks who run unopposed for various reasons. There may be folks, let's be frank, who have a large, large bankroll relative to their campaign. There may be folks who do a great job, folks who are honest and really work on behalf of their communities and put in the time and show an interest and don't show up just once a year. So there are a lot of reasons.
And that is the point. As you run for office, you need to raise money to run for office. If you're raising money, then I could see a financial disclosure. I'm an appointed person. I'm not running for anything. I'm not raising money for anything. Again, it seems extremely intrusive.
You're mixing two up.
I don't think so.
Campaign, yeah, campaign and political finance, they handle campaign contributions. This has to do with your financial interests. And it does apply to your income, too, within parameters. Doesn't ask you specifically for your income. It's within parameters. And I'll say it again. Why not? Why not try it?
Jim, aren't we already, aren't we already subject to state ethics laws? And isn't there a process by which someone who has a problem with what we're doing can appeal to an ethics board and question what we're doing?
And I'll come back to that again. That isn't the problem. You are subject to state ethics laws. We're talking about primarily financial disclosure. You sit on that board, let's say you own 50% of a development. You sat there, you own 50% of a development. I come before that board, I'm opposed to what you're doing, you vote for it. Shouldn't I know that you've got an interest in that?
That scenario is absolutely covered by 268A. 268A absolutely covers local officials who have a financial interest and who take action in a matter in which they have a financial interest. It's punishable by fines, it's punishable conceivably by jail time. I had to correct that point really quickly, and I'd like the opportunity to speak again.
Yeah. Representative?
Let me tell you, that is not a correction. You may have that interest in that process, but it's available to the citizens of the town when they go to look at your financial disclosure seat. They don't have to wait for you to get up there and say, gee, I've got a conflict of interest. What if you don't do that? Shouldn't they know that you've got an interest?
Mr. Mocelli, Representative?
Uh, wait, hang on, hang on.
I'd like to ask a question. If those of us that are maybe against or for Article 10, I mean Article 30, should we, if we were against it, should we not contact our representatives to help vote down this State House bill?
Oh, yeah.
If we don't believe in this one, why should we support the State House one?
Let me tell you, if you did that, I think the final arbiter will be the town meeting. They decide finally whether that goes forward or dies. And at the town meeting, they will vote on it. However, if you call me, obviously you know where I'm coming from, but I'd take everything into consideration. If I got 100 calls in opposition, obviously I'd weigh it, but it will go before the town meeting, and you'll have a chance to vote against it.
Does anyone else, I'd like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things that I wanted to point out. Anytime you start talking about full disclosure and ethics and conduct for public officials, that sounds good no matter how it's packaged. But I think it's important for people, in my mind especially, the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board in this case. You know, I'm not excited about the prospect of having to disclose my wife's financial interests, for example. I don't see what that has to do with anything in terms of my being a selectman. But like you, hey, if you want to talk about elected officials being treated a little bit differently, so be it. Let's talk about Planning Board and Board of Appeals. And let me just point out a couple of provisions in 268B. 268B requires an annual disclosure with respect to your financial interests and to your immediate family. An immediate family for the purposes of this legislation is spouse and dependent children. So that means the financial interests of a, for example, a 22-year-old grad student, dependent child of yours living with you. That's part of it. It talks about debt, how much debt you have, how is that debt secured? That's all part of the disclosures. Trying to think of some of the other ones that went applied to the Board of Appeals. Your various interests in real estate, anywhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I mean, all of these things are truly cumbersome and burdensome for a Planning Board and the Board of Appeals especially, and I echo the sentiments that were made earlier. You talk about excluding the school committee because it's difficult getting people to run. Try getting, you know, qualified, competent, honest people to be appointed to these volunteer boards like Planning Board and Board of Appeals that spend hours of volunteer time every month, and then you've got to disclose your family's financial interests on top of that. Doesn't make sense to me. The point has also been made that 268B has worked well at the state level. Well, I tend to disagree with that. I also happen to be one of the people that thinks no matter how hard you try, you're never going to legislate good judgment, and you're never going to legislate good ethics. But 268B, in my mind, has been on the books since 1978. The last two speakers of the House have been forced out under a cloud for ethical violations. So I'm not sure what 268B gets on a local level, number one. Number two, I'd be really interested in seeing the bill that's been filed, understanding that legislation changes as it goes through the process. I still have a hard time believing that this is analogous to the bill that's been filed. Singling out a Planning Board, a Board of Appeals, a Town or City Manager, and a Board of Selectmen. So if I could get a copy of that bill, that would be helpful as well.
Could I respond to that?
Quickly.
Yeah. First of all, you can't legislate morality. No one knows better than I that people don't take your integrity away. You have to give it away. And all this does is, when you talk about full disclosure, it doesn't say that you have an income of $50,970. It says you have an income, just to pick its parameters, between 30 and 90. But it also asks for the source of that income. Are you on the payroll of someone? Are you on the payroll of another commission? Are you on the payroll of a state agency? And I think that's important. I'll be honest with you, I'm surprised at the hostility. I'm serious. All we're asking you to do is, you're serving a board, make these issues public. Let the public know. And first of, and I'll say this, I don't speak for the integrity of all the members of the legislature, number one. I only speak for myself, and I think that's been proven time and time again, and I'm not being, I'm not on an ego trip. I'm trying to be modest while I'm up here speaking. This, I'll be honest with you. I thought I'd get up, speak tonight, and everybody'd say, Jesus, that's a great idea. We should have that in this community. We should be the first to have that. Instead, my God, it will be an interesting town meeting. Any other questions?
I think that's my question to ask. Okay, I think we'll move on to Article 34. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 34, to rezonate from neighborhood business to general business, 310 Lowell Street, map 72, Lot 2.
Should we all put our hands up of interest in the, in the name of this plan?
Good evening. I'm Kristin Costa with LA Associates. I'm here on behalf of, behalf of the owner, John Ling, on the 310 Lowell Street, on the corner of Lowell and Estre. Currently, assessment map 72 parcel two. The area of the lot is 34,477 square feet, 37,000, I thought it. The lot now has super service. The abut is basically direct across the street is a general business. Behind general business, and the abut to the rear is a neighborhood business, but also has an article on the warrant to do the same, rezonate general. Basically, the reason for it is to allow the owner to broaden the business use that's permissible by special permits. And it's in light with, in keeping with the surrounding proximity parcels.
Is there a business there now?
I'm sorry?
Is there a business there now?
There's a building there now. I believe it's stayed in, it's on.
It's been made in a while?
I'm sorry?
Since September?
Since September? It was sold one-on-one time, you remember, and this was up there.
Do you want to add a question?
Does anybody have any questions for the petitioner? We're on Article 35, rezonate from neighborhood business and residential 20 to general business, 81 West Street, map 72, Lot 2C.
Here tonight for Rich Stewart, owner of this parcel that's directly behind me when we just did. This is a, it's been moved to West Street over here now. The parcel, right now, I've highlighted it, and what it does is the zoning line runs through, what's shown here is Lot 1, is the subject parcel. There's an R20 to the rear, neighborhood business currently in the front. This, this parcel in the rear will stay, it's not part of the article. What he's requesting to do is change the whole parcel to general business. So one of the things it accomplishes is kind of cleans up this split zone line, if you will, and takes away or removes just the back section that is residential. Again, this will remain as it is in the back, which again is conducive to the surrounding parcels. Again, the one in the front, J and J's here, and then general business on this side, gas stations on the other side, and a business at the front. And for him, it would allow him a more broadened of the business use by special permit. This is a bigger one.
Any questions?
Where's the exit going to be to that? Is it going to be on West Street, or is it going to be on Lowell?
It does have front and a hole, but the exit.
Go back to your hole.
When you develop it, where is the entrance and exit going to be?
That one is 2.95 acres.
Does the zone line bisect that back, that second parcel as well? Is that part neighborhood business?
Yes.
Okay.
This place would be R20, R20, and the middle will just section neighborhood. This is where the, this piece will be R20, R20, and the middle will just section neighborhood.
Is that back section down though? It's the one that's not?
Changing?
No. It's, um, there's a quick one, Rich, you can answer this now.
Oh, it's available.
It is?
Or any reason not to do it all at once?
A lot of it was residential, and I'm looking to increase the business zoning to the residential area, just trying to clean up the split zone on the front, which, uh, has frontage and jungle.
Okay. Any questions? No, we'll move on. It's Article 37, transfer of care, custody, management, and control of town-owned land to Conservation Commission, map 6, parcel 21.
I have an objection.
From 3 Poplar Street, I imparting Article 37 on the warrant, basically because it is a large parcel, the largest parcel directly abutting the existing 55 acre wildlife parcel, Conservation Commission parcel, that right now does not have any direct access, direct frontage on any streets. And the idea of this is that there are numerous town parcels, you know, anytime in my history, 15 years being involved in conservation and environmental health and safety, when you have town parcels that are directly adjacent to existing conservation lands, they should go into conservation protection because what you want to do is expand the wildlife corridors, expand upon the conservation lands in there. It benefits all residents of the town, and then, you know, given a lot of the, oh, actually. The pictures here are actually up at 55 acre parcel. It's mostly up in the parcel, so it's actually very suitable for walking trails. Right now, during my discussions with many residents, they're not aware that this parcel even exists, let alone it doesn't get utilized. So it's a huge resource that the town has, that basically is city idol, and not really benefiting a lot of the residents. My article is map 6, parcel 21, it's on one of those other pages there. Basically, you know, for no cost to the town, many other towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Community Preservation Act funds, they spend grand money, they spend town funds, sometimes millions of dollars, to expand upon conservation land. Here we have an existing town-owned parcel, you know, earning no tax revenue, that we could expand directly adjacent to the existing town parcel, all of the cost. You know, some of the other key things I've talked about, there isn't a lot of access to the 55 acre, so it kind of, it's hidden. This parcel is actually the end of a, again, it has frontage on a paper street. There is a pavement to the end, to the corner of the parcel, so potentially provides for access and the development of walking trails. You know, in the neighborhood, there are numerous children that, again, have never been on this 55 acre parcel because there's no clear access to it. Obviously, there are issues with town, access of just general town versus conservation. My neighbor actually has a five-year-old, eight-year-old, been there six years, they've never been on this parcel, they live on a quarter acre lot, looking for, you know, open space, which is always very beneficial for children to explore. I've been before the Wilmington Locks Coalition, they support this article because they began up their, the idea of having walking trails at some point in the future. I've got the support of the individual members of the Conservation Commission, like three residents signed a petition to put it on the warrant article. The other key part, aspect of this, is that this parcel, the 55 acre parcel, this map 6, parcel 21, is part of a very large, existing, undeveloped corridor of land that's on, see that on the third page, you can kind of flip the third and fourth page, one's the town on, and one's, actually, the second page is also overlaid for those. Let me show a real brief. It's open space, so that these lands, the town on, and this is the conservation land, also has conservation land at the end of Mill Road, and then on the Burlington side of the border, there's town-owned or conservation land that extends. So, you know, there's the opportunity to have a very large walking path loop through this whole area, that, you know, once it's gone, once the parcel, if it remains general, could be lost forever, and that opportunity is gone. So the idea is, while the opportunity is here now, we should seize upon it. You know, some of the other facts, obviously, I realize there are many issues to anything, the finance committee's always going to be looking for money. This particular parcel actually has some problems for development. It has a vernal pool on, in the front of it, not certified, but maybe sooner, certified soon, has a large outcropping of ledge, and as I mentioned, although it has paper street frontage, doesn't have developed street frontage. And based on feedback from other roads in the area, there's a lot of ledge, there are no town utilities to the parcel, so its development value is very small. It's actually currently.
Okay, if I could just interject on that on the value, I guess I'll turn it over to Carol, who can say.
The, actually, this one won't have an value established for it. This is being requested to be transferred to the Conservation Commission. It will be reviewed as the other petitioned articles dealing with town-owned land, it will be reviewed by the Property Review Board at a public meeting tomorrow morning. Recommendation on these parcels gets made directly to the town manager. I don't think we declare this particular one surplus or non-surplus to the needs of the town because it would be a transfer, but that board will make a recommendation to the manager, and there'll be a recommendation in the packet as to how the Planning Board votes for the use of this particular piece.
Any other questions? I do, I do have a few others. So, you know, so basically, and the development value, a parcel recently sold in March of 2008, before the current, you know, massive economic downturn, same acreage approximately, that only sold for 15,000. That was map 6, parcel 40. So really, you know, and if you look at 15,000, earlier than that, they asked for a town budget, assume they got 15,000, that's 0.019% of this year's budget, it really doesn't do much, and then that just may just go on forever, you know, can't benefit the rest of the towns. The other thing is, you know, to those who would like to sell property for development or potential housing, there are actually three or four other 20,000 square foot town-owned parcels directly on existing, developed streets in this area. Parcell 644, parcel 635 through 38, parcel 634 and 33 and 34. So there are other developable parcels already in existing developed streets with developed street frontage available for those other uses. So really, when there's a parcel that's directly adjacent to conservation land, its best value, its highest value to the town and all of its residents is to put it into conservation land. Currently, three parcels are listed for sale that directly abut the 55 acre parcel. They all list adjacent to 55 acre conservation land as a value, and they're all selling at 650, 650, and 1.2 million, or 1.19 if I round up. You know, nonetheless, to me, this land, this conservation land should be open and available to all residents of the town, not just to those three properties, and it should be available to all residents, you know, not only in the immediate neighborhood, but to the town. So that's why I look for your support of Article 37. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
I'm trying to understand why it's not available to everybody now, it would only be available if it were Conservation Commission land.
My understanding is town land, as you call, I'd ask for your permission to be able to walk on it. I revise the town land is not officially for public use, so theoretically, there isn't open access to all residents. That's my understanding, also being on the Conservation Commission and other towns, that that's the legal statute in Massachusetts. I may be incorrect, but certainly, conservation land is open and available for public use where municipal town land, to my knowledge is not.
Hey, you indicated there were a lot of children in that area, and they would now be able to benefit. Would you be opposed to that property being developed as a park or as a playground area for that neighborhood?
I would not be opposed to that, because that would provide the same, the same access to the conservation land.
We might not be able to do that if it became conservation land.
No, we might not be able to, but again, for this, for this particular parcel, you wouldn't be able, parkland is art.
Well, we wouldn't be able to put something other than passive recreation there, and if you put playground area with structures and things, that would be, that would be problematic. So the only, I haven't really looked at this, and I intend for waiting for the Property Review Board to get back, but I just think that what I wouldn't want to do at this point is stifle the town's opportunity to do something more with this property and still meet some of the kinds of development ideas that you put forward ahead.
Well, I guess my comment to that was, as I mentioned, this parcel does have a vernal pool, likely soon to be certified, it has a large outcrop, and to actually bring a road access to where it could be developed, a 32,000 square foot parcel, I think the cost to town would be prohibitive. It would be better to spend that money on the playground, on playground equipment. As I mentioned, in this area, there is numerous town parcels that are developable, so I do not see the town limiting its opportunities in the gentle sense, in the gentle sense of all the town land in his own. In fact, I see if the town is not doing this, missing an opportunity. Last year on the warrant, map 6, parcel 19A was on for disposition. Property Review Board did not allow that, but nonetheless, you know, these parcels that are town-owned are subject to potential, you know, purchased by abutters, and therefore none of the residents of the town. So I see this, the opportunity exists today, as we go forward in the future, you know, the opportunity may not be there, and we should go for it. The other aspect of this is that those two parcels abutting from this parcel are for sale. You know, when parcels go for sale, I know from my prior experience in Conservation Commission, if its land is in the back quarter, so to speak, the likelihood of for encroachment by abutting property owners is very high, because no one sees the parcel, no one sees it, and this wildlife parcel that's undeveloped right now could lose its value. You know, even if the town were, you know, get its rights back in the future, if the trees are cut down, and the environmental condition is degraded, it loses its value. So I, you know, I look at this parcel, and this map, and this 20 something parcels, one parcel that actually is on conservation, shouldn't go.
Appreciate your passion on this issue.
Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, to Article 38, to see if the town will authorize selectmen and the town manager to settle litigation pending land court entitled Eleanor Estates LLC versus the Town of Wilmington.
Good evening. My name is Mark Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of Eleanor Estates LLC. The next three warrant articles, which I believe are Article 38, 39, and 40.
So we will take Article 38, 39, and 40.
Okay, thank you. It involves attempts to resolve current litigation between Eleanor Estates LLC and the Town of Wilmington. In short, over a half a century ago, the town took land and not paying the taxes, and it's taken instruments to vindicate that it was about 1.5 acres. For half a century to the day, the town has shown the land taken as lot 10, containing about 0.8 acres. When the Eleanor Estates subdivision plan went through the approval process, the engineer believed that town-owned land, which abutted the Eleanor Estates subdivision, was as shown on the assessor map. With the material you have today, you will see the current assessor's map, and Novellate was put together on that map, which would show what the belief is, the 1.5 acres, which would go into certain of the lots on the Eleanor Estates subdivision. The exact location of the 1.5 acres has not been determined, and it is not sure whether it goes into 9E. What we're attempting to do by these warrant articles is to set a mechanism up whereby the lawsuit can be resolved with the sale of whatever it was the town took about 50 or 50 years ago. These three warrant articles, the first one allows a settlement negotiation of the existing litigation, even if it involves the sale or transfer of town-owned land. I believe that gives some flexibility to the town manager and the selectmen to settle the litigation, and gives authority to settle it with the conveyance of land. The next two articles would authorize the sale, one article of just that portion of whatever was taken that would impact the Eleanor Estates lots, and then the third warrant article would authorize the sale of both parcel 10, as well as any of the land that may impact the Eleanor Estates lots. The parcel that the town owns is landlocked, and we hope that this is a mechanism to work towards a resolution of the litigation.
We were just trying to clarify the part about being landlocked. I guess it is landlocked, but when it came through for Planning Board approval, I think one of the conditions was that easement was given to access that lot.
That's correct, but in terms of, it's the abutting Marion Street, it does not have access from Marion Street.
Okay, take a question? You need to, you need to go to the microphone, and if you don't, as long as you speak loudly so they can hear you. Give your name and your address.
I am the owner of the 1.1 and 1/2 acres that they're trying to take from the whole thing. Somebody wants that. Kick me out of the house. My mother lost 4 and 1/2 acres in 1968 because of something my brother did, and I have been trying to hold on to that one piece of what my mother had left. And as I can understand, you're trying to just move it into Eleanor Estates, which Eleanor Estates was my mother's whole estate. And I don't, I don't want to give you my only piece of salvation that I've been taking care of since 1968.
I'll be honest, and I'm not quite sure how to respond to that.
Well, I, all you know is, I don't want you to take my land. I've been paying for it since 1968.
Not according to our records, but.
Oh, that's not true.
Wait a minute.
I got all my tax bills from 1800.
Okay, just a minute. The town records reflect that parcel 10 has been owned by the town for over 50 years. I'm not sure if we're talking about the same parcel.
Well, that's what I'd like to know, if we're talking about the same parcel. But right now, I was right, and it's all crazy.
I think, I think at this point, you've certainly thrown something out that I'm not aware of, and I think the town might find it a surprise as well, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to meet with you after the meeting, to try to understand what land you believe you own, and what land appears to be owned by the town.
The Eleanor Estates goes around it.
If there are, but I'm more than happy to show you, to show you the land, to see whether or not it's not owned by the town. I think the town is surprised as well by, by your claim that you own the land.
Unless it is a different section, I don't know, but that would ever stay, the 1 and 1/2 acres.
It's, but I'm, I mean, I'm happy to meet with you, but on this, let me show you, let me show what we're talking about.
Well, I want to do that after, so.
Yeah, I think we need to do that after the meeting.
Seems to be a little bit of confusion. I mean, we've been, under the understanding all along that it was town property, so.
Well, I hope it's a different section, because I, that tax bills by 1800.
I guess I'm comfortable that, let's assume that it is a separate section, because it's been out, and if the board has any other questions, I'm happy to, I'm happy to discuss it.
First article, you're basically asking for the town to give you the land?
No.
No? You're looking for, the town receives no financial payment?
Even if the town does not, that's language that we believe is standard in a warrant article. It has to go through the bidding process.
I was going to say, how, they're competing. I was going to say, how 32B come into effect? How would the bidding 32B come into effect?
I'm assuming that that will be set by the town as to what the disposition will be. I believe if it's under $25,000, it does not need to go out to the bidding process. It's over, and it will. I'm assuming that the town board is going to get some guidance as to what they believe the property is worth. The first warrant article, I believe, gives a little more flexibility in working on an overall resolution of it. The second and third, clearly would have to go through whatever the bidding process would be required in that law.
Are there any lawsuits currently outstanding? Are there any lawsuits currently?
There's currently pending a lawsuit relative to this property, and this is our way of hoping to reach a resolution of it.
Wouldn't that be done through the town's attorney, and town manager?
We've worked to try to do that, but the obvious roadblock has been town councils believe that any resolution which would result in the property being sold by the town, and hopefully to be purchased by Eleanor Estates to resolve any issues out there, would have to look through the town meeting laws. So this is our hope to move any discussions along.
Just a little confused. If you said that on, maybe I didn't hear you. You said on Article 38 that the threshold was above $25,000.
Let me get the articles right. There's 39 and 40. I believe 39 and 40, which can sell land. I believe the threshold is 25,000.
Let's make sure we have the right articles. I think it's 38, 39, and 40.
We're not giving you settling the litigation.
Right, 38 is settling the litigation. And the question that Mr. Doherty asked had to do with 32B, with the legislation with the disposition statute. And did you say something about 25, you said that if it's under $25,000, and according to the statute, you could do a negotiated sale, I think is something like that.
I, we have to comply with the public bidding statute. By no means am I saying we don't. I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that if it's under 25,000, there's a different process than if it's over 25,000.
But if you have to comply with the public bidding process, then why, why did you, what submitted Article 38?
Article 30, well, Article 38, under the town charter, there's a question as to whether or not the selectmen and the town manager have a right to settle ongoing litigation. In reading it, it appears that town management and selectmen do have the right to settle ongoing litigation. The question then became, can they still settle it if it involves a conveyance of land? So I submitted what is the first article on the list, to try to get town meeting approval to allow the selectman and town manager to settle the litigation, even if it involves a conveyance of property. I'm not convinced that that would require public bidding, but a negotiated settlement of it.
So is it your opinion that, that there is not a requirement to go through the public disposition process?
On a negotiated settlement, if that warrant article, if that warrant article passes, I believe it would not, but I know you're going to, you're going to hear from town council.
Yeah, I talked with town council. We don't have that position. The town has always, as a matter of policy, disposed of property through a surplus, through a disposition process outlined by the law and by the town's bylaws, which have required us to go out for public bid to establish the ceremony value of a public bidding.
And if that's a position, I mean, I've tried to have a dialogue with town council on this issue, and I'm happy to continue it. It was a difference of opinion as to whether or not the town charter authorized the settlement of litigation, even if it, even if it involved the conveyance of property. I was trying to resolve that issue by the first warrant article, because I think it gave more flexibility. If town council's opinion is going to be that the first warrant article has to go out to public bidding as well, then that may not be a warrant article that we will hold on. But I'm more than happy to just continue the dialogue on that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else get any questions? Could you please state your name and your address for the record? Thank you.
Marion Street. Probably the talking about, is that between Clifton and Marion Street, the 1 and 1/2 acres?
Let me show you.
Okay, I think we resolved the other issue.
I'll say.
It's the town's behalf of the community.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one question. Keith's actually popular. Does the easement access to the parcel 10, if that's not the area, I'm assuming that it's the Eleanor Drive?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Move on to...
I mean, I just need to clarify that. The access easement to Parcel 10 is from Marion Street. It goes along the side of the parcel.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, it does not go to Eleanor Drive. Okay, just so we don't leave anybody thinking wrong, we do not have frontage on Marion Street. We have walking access, small machinery access, that's it.
Your Parcel 5B.
Your Parcel 5B, correct.
Thank you.
Nope, that's good, you did. I was just thinking, I was just thinking. Okay, Article 41, disposition of town-owned land, 41 Salem Street, map 103, Parcel 35G. Petitioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Morris. I live at 55 Andover Street. If I could direct your attention to the, to the printout that came with Article 41. So I have this big parcel that's in the middle. I'm the, the large parcel in the middle, it's about seven acres or so. I just wanted to point out that the parcel of interest is this one down here, 15G, and I don't know if you can see it, I'll step up if you don't mind, but the parcel is actually a little bit smaller. That's shown on the map here, because the map isn't quite, isn't quite accurate.
Yeah, okay.
So, so this piece of land, I, when I first moved there, when I moved into that area, I tried to get in touch with the property owners there to purchase it, because it abuts my land. It's, I don't believe it's a buildable lot. It's wet most of the time. On my property, there are several streams that go through. There's a lot of flood plain, there's, there's a large pond and things like that. So the reason I'd like, I'd like to buy it is because it's town-owned now. I believe it was taken for tax title, or non-payment of back taxes, whatever the right terminology is there. And I don't believe it's a buildable lot, but the problem is that it's become a dump. There are large piles of concrete, there are, I am, you know, forever pulling stuff out of there and getting rid of it. Last year at the, last year at the hazardous waste cleanup, I think I brought 22 tires down to, to the, to the hazardous waste cleanup that I pulled out of there, and in other places around there. So as I say, it's all wet, it's most, it's underwater most of the time. I just want to buy it to prevent any kind of building going on there, or prevent anything happening with it, and to be able to maintain it and clean it up, because it makes the rest of my property a bit unsightly to have this big pile of trash going on there next to my place. Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions?
My name is Dorothy Geddy. I live right adjacent to that lot, and he's right, it is underwater most of the time, and people do dump there. But I can't believe that Mr. Morris simply wants that land so that he can keep it clean. My husband kept that land clean for many years, because we've lived there for 47 years, and we never thought we had to own the land in order to keep it clean. So I'm hoping that that really is the only reason that Mr. Morris wants to purchase the land. I'm very concerned, because it's so wet, and when I bought my home, I had really a flood in my basement all the time. I wrote a letter to Ms. Hamilton, so I'm sure she's read it. And any change to the terrain there would really affect me, and I don't think that I could fix it once it would be, what we've accomplished would be undone. So I am hoping that the, the town would keep it and consider it conservation land, because that's really what it should be. It also drains into a brook, and that brook empties into the Browns Crossings aquifer. So I think it's important that it's never built on, or that no road is ever used to access landlocked land that Mr. Morris owns. Now, perhaps Mr. Morris is being honest, and he only wants to keep the land clear, but I have to protect myself also. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Article 42, disposition of town-owned land, 35 Rhode Island Road, map 35, Parcel 67.
I've owned Parcel 67, and this 67A abuts my piece of land. And it's a heavily wooded area. I've never had it surveyed. I was going to start to do that the latter part of the year, and the weather kind of closed in, and I want to hire the surveyor to do, if the town will sell this little piece of property to me, that will give me a better overall picture of a rectangle rather than an odd-shaped piece of property there. And it appears to be landlocked. I don't think it's of any use to anybody up there. I don't know about the condition of it. I try to go walk up there. It's pretty heavily wooded. You need a machete to get in. So I'm petitioning for that piece of property to have it surveyed, and that's about all I'm going to do for the moment for it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. That concludes the articles. Are we going to adjourn to Room 9?
We'll take a short break while the planning board recesses to Room 9. Call the meeting back to order, please.
You all set? Could you, could you please take your seats, so we can continue the meeting?
We all set? Okay, that's okay. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Article 3 is a regular housekeeping article. In the event that there are any unpaid bills from previous years, the town will report that there are no unpaid bills, and we'll move over that article.
Thank you. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen to enter into an agreement under the provision of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws, with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2010, for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the Town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions, in return for said institutions providing banking services, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Manager?
This too, Mr. Chairman, is an annual article that is required under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F, which would enable the treasurer-collector to enter into an agreement with banks, so that the town can do banking services with banks, the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Any comments for any? Okay. Article 5. To see how much money the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments, and determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the Finance Committee has had several meetings with the various departments, school departments, regional school, and has reviewed all of these budgets that are contained, and that will be gone through by the moderator, line item by line item, at town meeting. We have nothing further to report at this point. I think, just like every other community in the Commonwealth, we're waiting ultimately to see what comes out of any municipal aid package. But at this point, we've presented you with a budget based upon what the town anticipates in revenue that is balanced going forward into fiscal year 2010.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Next, Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase of new and/or replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items. And further, to authorize the sale, trade-in, conveyance, or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced, such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager, and to the extent set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, the board of selectmen as follows. First, police department, purchase of four replacement police cruisers. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, all of the department heads are in this room, and so if there are any specific questions about these items, but I know for the benefit of the public, you've already been through every one of these items at your meetings, as has the selectmen who are here. But if there's anything that needs to be clarified, just let me know. In this case, we're looking to replace four of the frontline cruisers. They would cost a total of $119,700. We project that the price for the cruiser would be $29,925 each.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Second, Fire Department, purchase of one replacement ambulance, and the purchase of one replacement aerial ladder truck. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, we're looking to purchase a new ambulance for the Fire Department to replace the 2000 American Le France ambulance with 105,000 miles. This would put the current number one ambulance into second position, and the new ambulance would, would become the frontline ambulance. We estimate the cost for this fully-equipped ambulance would be approximately $180,000.
Okay. And for the ladder truck? And for the ladder truck?
For the ladder truck, Mr. Chairman, we want to purchase a ladder truck to replace a nineteen eighty-six model that has seen better days. We know that much progress has been made in upgrading functional capabilities and improving safety features for this kind of apparatus. And the fire chief is now in the process of looking for and determining more specifically what the cost would be for a replacement ladder truck. We would estimate at this point that we would be in the nine hundred and fifty thousand to a one million and fifty thousand dollar range. Initially, we were looking at as much as one point two million dollars. It seems to be much more of a competitive environment right now. And we probably could purchase a fully-equipped ladder truck for, in the vicinity of a million dollars. We would do that through a borrowing. There are four different items in this budget that we would package for a general borrowing where the payment of debt would begin in fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Next, school department, purchase and installation of a handicap-accessible chairlift for the West Intermediate School. Mr. Manager?
Yes. In this case, we want to complete the accessibility at the West Intermediate School, and the only area that is not now accessible for students, staff, or visitors is the stage area. And so by the purchase of a handicap-accessible chairlift to enable folks to get up onto the stage, we would be able to accomplish our goal. In this case, we estimate the cost to be nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Department of Public Works, purchase of one replacement heavy-duty rack-body truck for the tree division and one sidewalk plow with flail mower for the highway division. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, we're looking for the heavy-body, the heavy-duty rack-body truck to replace a nineteen eighty-nine vehicle within excess of a hundred and eight thousand miles of very hard operation. The vehicle would also have a grapple-type rear-mounted crane and would be used in the tree division to assist in all the work that the tree department is involved with through the Department of Public Works. The truck's estimated cost is one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
And the sidewalk plow?
Yes, we want to replace a nineteen eighty-eight bombardier sidewalk plow. The replacement plow would be equipped with a V-plow flail mower and turf tires. It would provide the department with much more versatility, also enabling a tool, in this case, for the town's roadside cutting program. We estimate that the cost for this particular piece of machinery to be a hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Article seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase of an emergency medical services computer system for the fire department. Such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
We're looking to spend forty-five thousand dollars for the fire department in order to both purchase and install a computer-based system to securely collect and store pre-hospital patient care reports that result from emergency medical services that are provided by our fire department personnel. I can tell you this is a state mandate. We're effective in September of two thousand and nine. All ambulance service providers must submit standardized patient data and trip information to the State Department of Public Health. And we need to comply with this particular mandate. It also, I think in the end, would assist us in a more rapid collection of ambulance receipts. And again, it would be for forty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any comments? Article number eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase of technology equipment for the high school, including smart boards, projectors, and replacement computers. Such funds to be spent by the superintendent of schools with the approval of the school committee or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
This is a major capital investment that the school committee is looking for in terms of technology at the high school. It is consistent with the school department's five-year master plan for improvements in technology. It will certainly assist the town as it goes through the upcoming high school accreditation process. Specifically, it would purchase fifty-one smart boards for the, for the high school and replace eighty computers along with numerous projectors. And we believe it would bring the high school up to an appropriate level in terms of technology. And it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Any comments? Article nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase and installation of an upgraded fire alarm system at the Wildwood School or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Yes, the public buildings superintendent, along with the fire chief and deputy fire chief, have been looking at the various buildings to make sure that we establish a priority to improve on all of our life safety and fire safety responsibilities. In this case, we look at the Wildwood School, the wood structure, and believe that we need certainly to upgrade the fire alarm system. The upgrade will result in the installation of smoke detectors, updated emergency pull stations, horn and light strobe warnings throughout the entire school. It's a small school. It's our estimate that it would cost about thirty, about sixty thousand dollars for this approximately thirty thousand square foot building.
Thank you. Any comments? Article ten. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase and installation of an upgraded fire alarm system at the Shawshin School or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
We also determined that the, the other priority at this point in the school system would be to upgrade the Shawshin School's fire alarm system based upon the grade level of the attendees, the age of the building, the layout of the building, and the fact that it's used as a community-wide building for a number of activities beyond just the normal school curriculum. In this case, we're looking to install this upgraded fire alarm system for the cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, these numbers are estimates, and we hope that if we have a more specific number at the, by the time we get to town meeting, that would be the number that would be offered in the motion. Superintendent of Public Buildings, Mr. Hooper, has been doing diligence in this area to, to make sure he can come up with as refined a number as possible.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, article eleven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to remove and replace the existing asbestos vinyl tiled floors at the Woben Street School with vinyl composite floor tiles or take any other reaction related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Again, the Woben Street School tiles and the floor tiles are asbestos vinyl tiled floors, and we want to replace them with vinyl composite floor tiles. The major component of this work revolves around the asbestos abatement activity. The contractor will be responsible to remove and dispose all of the existing floor tiles and to do that in confluence with the federal, state, and local regulations that govern the removal of any asbestos-containing material. We would be doing that in the entire building, and the new tiles obviously would be much safer and would also improve the appearance of the school, improve our ability to maintain them. What, what is happening right now is there are cracks in these tiles, and this would actually, in the long run, be a less expensive way of, of dealing with this particular problem. We estimate that we would need two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, all from available funds in fiscal year two thousand and ten.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? None? Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to replace all single-pane windows throughout the Shawshin School with thermal panel translucent windows or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
We've identified the Shawshin School as the one facility in most need of new windows. Existing windows are not energy-efficient, and they lead to significant heat loss. The windows aren't weather-tight, and they often leak, particularly when there is any hard-driving rains. We believe the thermal panel windows will reduce the cost and eliminate these window leaks. This is a major job where we have, again, refined our estimate here, where we were looking at, for example, the aerial ladder truck at a higher amount and coming down. We're looking at this as going probably closer to seven hundred thousand dollars. Our initial estimates were about six hundred and twenty thousand. It all still remains within the five point five million that we're talking about borrowing, or the three million that we're talking about borrowing specifically through the, through the tax rate. In this, in this particular instance, the work would likely end up being done at the far end of the fiscal year, where some of these other jobs, we're planning to do it during the summer vacation. In this case, we would probably need to do this work, I would expect, beginning in, in the latter part of fiscal year two thousand and ten, which would be probably in calendar year two thousand and ten in June or so. And again, this would be through a debt financing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Next, article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to transfer pursuant to chapter forty, section fifteen A of the General Laws, the key air custody and control of the Swain School site as shown in parcel one on Wilmington's Sessors Map sixty-six from the Wilmington School Committee, which has declared such site surplus and unnecessary for the educational purposes of the Wilmington Public Schools to the key air custody and control of the board of selectmen and under the management of the town manager. And further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of demolishing the Swain School and properly disposing all material related to such demolition or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
As you know, Mr. Chairman, the Swain School is in an advanced stage of disrepair. We looked at essentially demolishing the school several years ago in conjunction with plans for a new library at that site. The school department has indicated in a public vote that the school is of, is a surplus to their, to their needs and that they have no need for it. So we've done those perfunctory things in anticipation of this ultimate vote for an appropriation of a hundred and sixty thousand to, to take down the, the school. We'll do so in conjunction with the Historical Commission in the event that there are items or artifacts from that school that are of interest to the, to the Historical Commission. Right now, the school does not have any active use to it with the, with the Wilmington cable television going to new quarters. The only thing in that school now is some storage, and those items are in the process of being removed in anticipation of a favorable vote at town meeting. It's our intent to look at this site for future municipal use, the same as it has generally been the intent to do that over the last, you know, thirty or forty years. It's always been a site that people have earmarked as being one that might be for a future, future municipal facility. And in the interim, our intent is to take the school down because we believe it's a public safety hazard at this point. The major portion of that cost, again, would be the asbestos removal and containment. Just to demolish it in and of itself doesn't cost a whole lot, but because there is asbestos in the building, we have, we can only take it down in a certain manner to conform with state and federal regulations. And then ultimately, the determination of what that site will become is a determination that would be made by, by the town meeting. But in the interim, we will, we will likely just hard-top that area and allow it to be used in conjunction with other events that take place at the common.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes?
Carolyn Harris, Seventeen Marion Street, also chair of the Historical Commission. And I would be remiss if I didn't at least address this particular warrant article. The Historical Commission, and I'm speaking on behalf of the entire commission, has spent considerable time discussing the Swain School. You know, it's, and I'm sure you've heard me say this before, it's a shame to lose our historical landmarks in town. Our best shot at saving the school was Tappé's architectural plan for a library. Obviously, that didn't happen. And at that time, I think it sort of sealed the fate of the Swain School. We are, as a commission, aware of the condition of the building. We hate to see it come down. I have talked with town manager regarding having the commission go through, take a look at any elements of the school that could be preserved, perhaps brought to the museum or to the West Schoolhouse. We are particularly interested in the frieze that says "High School nineteen fourteen." We would like to, in some way, preserve that and perhaps create a park bench or something to memorialize the building. Again, it's a shame to see, you know, these buildings go, but we are well aware of the economy, and it's, I guess, it's time for it, you know? So I hope that we'll be able to work with the director of public buildings, the superintendent of public buildings, and the town manager to preserve some of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Frank West, Two Birchwood Road. I served proudly with Carolyn Harris on the Historical Commission from nineteen ninety till two thousand and two, and I'm also a former selectman in the community. Basically, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see if the, if the town would rethink the position of totally demolishing the, of the Swain School for a couple of reasons. One, I think, like many people, I think I agree that that site should be a town hall. I think it was designed, it's the perfect location for ultimately a town hall. To probably build, to probably spend six million dollars or whatever it's gonna cost for a town hall, I think, I don't think, you couldn't get eight million dollars for a library several years ago. I don't think you're gonna get, especially in the foreseeable future. I don't know that you can get that kind of money, because probably five, six million dollars to knock down and put a new town hall up. As the town manager said, that the bulk of the cost are the asbestos removal, probably, and I, you know, I actually had a licensed asbestos contractor, asbestos contractor get on there at one point several years ago. It appears to me, and maybe the manager or building superintendent might have a different point of view, but from what I understand is, is that the tile, the floor tiles have asbestos on them. One of the heating systems is covered in asbestos, and there might be some scattered asbestos around in some of the windows. But the windows, I believe, were replaced probably about twenty-five odd years ago. What I'd like to see if possible and practical is that we did, do we do something similar to what we did with the West Schoolhouse? I believe back in nineteen ninety, and Carolyn will certainly agree that, you know, that when I first joined the commission in nineteen ninety, the, they were in process of putting that building in the National Build, National Register of Historic Places, and that building was a total dump, and it was a disgrace. And the West School, those, I think that what, what happened was is that we were able to raise, secure state funding, plus the aid of the Shawshin Tech to rehab and restore that building, and today it's a beautiful building. And it was, and it proudly was part of the rededication. I think that one of the things that you might be looking at is that ultimately, if we could rehab it in some fashion, one of the things we're talking about is building a brand-new high school. Some of the, some of the money that you could save is that if we did rehab the Swain School to an extent, is that you're gonna be looking at trailer costs to, you know, put the stuff that's in the high school now, books and desks, materials that are in there now. I think that ultimately, I think that the Swain could be used as a town hall, but also in the interim, it could be used as some sort of a multi-use facility down in the basement. I know it gets water, but, you know, there are systems out there, B-Dry type systems that they could use out there that might alleviate some of that. But what you might be able to do is put some real bathrooms in that place, and this way here would maybe alleviate some of the porta-potties that are out there for the Fourth of July activities and give people, you know, probably a little bit more sanitary and experience in the, going, you know, using our town activities. The other thing also is, is that during the Fourth of July week, there might be organizations that might want to use that building to of July week, there might be organizations that might want to use that building to put some sort of a revolving display. Also, being a Cub Scout Den Leader, and I know that there are other parents around that are involved with their kids in various activities, some of those rooms might be used as, for activity rooms where, instead of everyone having to bring materials all the time to, for example, the St. Thomas Church where I'm currently a Den Leader, and take materials back, some of the materials might be able to be kept there if they had designated rooms for certain activities. Probably lastly, just so I'm not taking up any more time than necessary, I was intimately involved in the West Schoolhouse, and I would be more than happy if the town had had some sort of a committee that wanted to see if we could preserve the Swain School and seek fundraising activities. You know, probably, it would probably take a million dollars or so, and Mr. Kyra may have a better figure than me. I'm assuming probably a million-plus dollars to rehab the building and to make it usable in its current state, and then at some point in the future, they could put a handicapped, handicapped out in the back, maybe add an addition out in the back, and hire a firm such as Tapay Associates, who did extensive work in buildings such as the Nevins Library that was built around the turn of the 1900s and expanded upon the Barica Library, which was the old Barica Town Hall, which was expanded on, and give us a town hall that we're proud of. The only other thing that I will add is that even the library's own feasibility study said that, you know, basically, you've got the services already there. It would be, I think it would be a better asset as a building than it would be to support another 20-odd parking spaces, and maybe in the future, you might lose the grassed area in the front to more parking, and that would take away some of the, you know, some of the characteristics of the town, like when they do the petting zoo, and just, you know, more enhanced use of the town common area. But again, I'd like, if the town would rethink, you know, if we could, I'd love to have the 160,000 as a basis to abate the asbestos and remove hazardous materials, and if the warrant article could in fact be changed to do that, that would be fantastic. But like I said, is that I think that even as I was talking, lastly, I guess, excuse me for keep saying lastly, but I was talking to Rep. Maselli just to find out if there was money for endangered buildings in the state right now, in the state being in the type of crisis it is, that's in right now. And he had mentioned that there actually may be some funding because of the economic stimulus package, so it may, although it may be a good time to demolish the building because you can get, you might be able to get a decent price for it, it may also be a decent time to rehab the building without using a lot of town resources. And again, lastly, I'd be happy, more than happy, to be involved in fundraising activities and see if we can get the type of money that would be involved and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Next, Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to replace the Browns Crossing Well Field and Pump Station with funds to be spent by the Town Manager with the approval of the Water and Sewer Commission or take any other action related thereto.
Good evening. The Browns Crossing Well Field was a well field that was put in in 1929. It was the highest yielding well field for many years. Today, it is our least producing facility. It's down about a third of its capacity. We're looking for no more than $2.5 million to bring it back to its full capacity and enable the town to better serve our water needs by using our own water and relying less on the MWRA, which is something else I'll speak to a little later on this evening.
Any comments or questions? Next, Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to rehabilitate the Main Street Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Line, including the replacement of related manholes. Such funds to be spent by the Town Manager with the approval of the Water and Sewer Commission or take any other action related thereto.
This is the last large project for sewer rehab in the town of Wilmington. We've indulged it for the last 10 years in removing most of the inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. We have about 3,300 feet and 14 manholes of 36-inch sewer line that runs from Butters Row to Ames Street. That will be totally rehabbed, and we expect that cost to be approximately $1.25 million.
Any questions or comments? No? Thank you. Article 16. To see if the sum will vote, to see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year 2009 budget from other line items of said budget and from other available funds or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, this is a standard article that is put in each year to reconcile budget differences of the current fiscal year and to look at the various accounts of the town and to determine which accounts are running deficits and which accounts are running surpluses. We anticipate at this point that we will be able to essentially match up, but clearly there are two major accounts that have, and that are, running deficits. One is the snow and ice removal account, which will likely be in deficit by in the area of $300,000. And the other is the heating oil, which would likely be in deficit in the area of $500,000. These are estimates at this point. We believe there is funds available in other accounts because we have kept positions vacant in order to force savings. We've also expect and anticipate a savings in the trash account. We anticipate a savings in the Shawshin Regional School District Account. We anticipate some savings in insurance accounts. And we will also, as you know, rely on the Finance Committee to look at these budget deficits in terms of the Finance Committee Reserve, where the Committee was wise to budget $400,000 this past year.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Article 17. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town's senior citizens' tax work-off program or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, the town will be seeking $15,360 to enable us to continue this program that has worked out very well for us since, I believe, 1995 or 1996. It's administered through the Town Manager's Office and through the Director of Elderly Services. Particular work done by Teresa Macielo and by Beverly Dalton from my office. And we place qualified seniors in various school and municipal departments where they're able to earn up to $640 per year based upon 80 hours of service. The amount of money that we are asking for this year would enable us to appoint approximately 24 seniors into various positions throughout the schools in the town.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Article 18. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, we are seeking $6,000 to enable the town to provide for suitable celebrations for both Memorial and Veterans Day.
Any comments or questions? Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of $750 each for a total of $1,500 for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section 9 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws as amended, the lease of (a) the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neel Ellsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and (b) the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, the article is exactly as stated by the Chairman, $750 each to help support the activities of the VFW and the American Legion, and it is in compliance with the appropriate state statutes.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Article 20. To see if the town will vote to establish a new stabilization fund entitled "Other Post-Employment Benefits" in compliance with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 45, and to further to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of providing initial funding of said stabilization fund or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Yes, we're recommending the establishment of this new stabilization fund entitled "Other Post-Employment Benefits" in order to comply with Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 45, which pertains to accounting and financial reporting by employers for post-employment benefits other than pensions. In this case, the policy requires that all governmental entities measure and report future liabilities for benefits, specifically health insurance, that are or will be provided to retirees. The fiscal year budget for 2010 recommends initial funding in the amount of $100,000 for this purpose. We're seeing that many communities are doing this now, and it also assists communities in meeting these obligations of GASP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, but more importantly, it also is something that bond rating agencies look favorably on, and it's our expectation that we will be going out to the bond market in the very near future, and that Standard Impores will be doing a new rating on the town.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Article 21. To see if the town will vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2 for the various boards, commissions, departments, and agencies of the town or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Yes, this is specifically the reauthorization of revolving accounts for the Septic System Loan Repair Program and for the compost bin recycling program, where monies come in from residents who take advantage of either of these proposals, and it goes into a revolving account, and those funds that are paid back or purchased, in the case of the compost bins, allow us, in the case of the compost bins, to purchase more of them, and in the case of the Septic System Repair Program, enables us to fund additional residents who may be having problems.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Article 22. To see if the town will vote to continue its participation in the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority Financial Assistance Program, which provides grants and interest-free loans for the purpose of funding and infiltration and inflow reduction and sewer system rehabilitation program, and to authorize the Selectmen and/or Town Manager to accept said grants and to execute documents relative to the interest-free loans as may be required, and further to appropriate said funds for engineering services, construction or reconstruction of sewers, sewage systems, and sewage disposal facilities, and appurtenances to, and to determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer, or borrowing, or any combination thereof, or take any other action related thereto.
The town has used this program on five other occasions to reduce inflow and infiltration into the sewer system, which in the end saves the town money on its sewer assessment. The INI or inflow and infiltration is actually groundwater or stormwater that infiltrates its way into the sewer system and is read by the MWRA meter, which in turn, they generate a bill back to the town. This, currently, there is Phase 6 for $212,000. It's 45% grant, 55% zero interest, five-year loan. Like I said, it's $212,000 currently. There's talk of another $208,000 being available this July for $420,000 total, and we're hoping to use that money to offset the sewer program I spoke of earlier.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Next, Article 23. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, a transfer from available funds, a sum of money representing the amount of proceeds received by the town from the methyl, tertiary, butyl, ether products liability litigation settlements or otherwise to transfer such MTBE settlement proceeds to the water fund or take any other action related thereto.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the town has been involved, as you know, in products liability litigation involving a class action suit against various oil companies, and in this case, we have been successful in reaching certain settlements to the tune of between $850,000 and $900,000. There are at least 80 other Massachusetts districts and hundreds and hundreds throughout the country that are making settlements. We're doing this with advice from Town Council and through the attorney for all of the plaintiffs in this particular class action. We continue to receive settlement documents. As a matter of fact, I've just sent settlement documents for two new companies to Town Council's office for review, and that's why we don't have a specific number at this moment. But by the time those settlements come forward and we actually receive the distribution of monies, we probably will have around $900,000. It's always been our intent to move this money and transfer the proceeds to the water department, and that's what this office does. It essentially ratifies the town's position, and it is consistent with what is being done throughout the country with these settlement amounts.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Next, Article 24. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Town Manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commission to enter into permanent membership and become a permanent member of the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority for the supply of a supplemental public water supply for the town of Wilmington in accordance with Section 8D of Chapter 372 of the Acts of 1984, and reviews and approvals of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs pursuant to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act and the Massachusetts Water Resource Commission pursuant to the Inter Basin Transfer Act, and to authorize said manager, Board of Selectmen, and Water and Sewer Commission to enter into long-term contracts and agreements to carry out the foregoing and to further to maintain and further such membership or take any other action related thereto.
A positive vote on this article enabled the town to join the MWRA as a permanent member and allow us to withdraw 600,000 gallons per day on an average annual day basis to supplement the existing water supply for the town. Currently, we buy our water from MWRA at a cost of 1.3 times the cost that we'll be purchasing it as a member community or all other member communities purchase it. One way or another, the town needs to buy this water. We have been for the last six years. This will be Summer Number Seven, and this is the, financially, the best way to solve the town's water problems that we've had now for seven years.
The cost of membership?
The cost of membership is, I'm going to say, oh...
The, we're going to finance through the MWRA, and the total for the town of Wilmington will be $2.8 million, and that'll be paid through the rates over a 20-year period to keep any rate increase to be essentially de minimis over that period of time.
Any questions or comments? None? Article 25 is a long one. It is, "To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised by adding the following new Chapter 5, Section 49, excavation and trench safety as follows." And I think everyone here has the warrants. I won't read the rest of it. Mr. Kyra?
I can defer to Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director. Right now, I probably would make the most sense, and she'll be the local permitting authority. The Board of Health will be the local permitting authority to enforce the rules and regulations that are being promulgated as a result of state statute.
On March 1st, the excavation and trench safety regulation became effective in the Commonwealth. Under the regulation, municipalities must designate a permitting authority, which in this case will be the Board of Health. The Board of Health will issue the required permits for trenches on public ways and private property within the municipality.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to petition the General Court and to request its representatives in the General Court to seek enactment of special legislation for the town in the form of set forth below, it being the intent of the town to authorize the General Court to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the town's Board of Selectmen, and to accomplish the public policy purpose hereof, or take any other action related thereto. This is an act exempting the town of Wilmington from liability. Mr. Kyra?
Yes, this is a result of the Board of Selectmen recommending... Yes, this is a result of the board of selectmen recommending that town council draft special legislations that the town could seek its enactment to exempt the town from liability with respect to the solid waste landfill and site located in the town, which is commonly referred to as the Maple Meadows landfill. Essentially, this would determine that the town would not be a potentially responsible party in the cleanup of any contamination that may have resulted at the landfill or in any of the capping enclosure responsibilities.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Article... Yeah? Bernie?
My question is, where the town was contributed when there was an official dump there, how can we avoid liability?
We've taken the position that the town has not contributed to the contamination of that site. And in terms of discussing that specific issue at a public forum, I'm not sure that that would be the wisest thing for me to do respectfully. I could refer to town council at this point, but I'm not sure we want to get into any litigation strategies of the town. In this case, this is sort of a belt and suspender position. Not only are we arguing legally that we should not be responsible, we would like to also get a determination by the state legislature that would remove all doubt. So that's what we're doing. I am avoiding the specifics of your question because I don't want to compromise the town's legal position.
Thank you. Any other questions? Next, Article 27. To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised by adding the following new Chapter 5, Section 12A, or take any other action related thereto. Section 12A, public consumption of marijuana or... I can't even pronounce that one. Chief?
There are handouts in the back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This basically is a bylaw that was drafted by the Attorney General's Office. It's kind of a boilerplate, and it is designed to address some of the loopholes that we have found in the new legislation that has come out on this controversial law. So the idea behind this is to give the town the authority to address this on its level. It still is not a criminal offense for marijuana. It just gives us the opportunity to use the town's bylaw authority to enforce it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to petition the general court and to request its representatives in the general court to seek enactment of special legislation for the town in the form set below, it being the intent of the town to authorize the general court to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the town's board of selectmen, and to accomplish the public policy purposes hereof, or take any other action related thereto, an act exempting the position of fire chief in the town of Wilmington from the civil service law. Mr. Kira?
Mr. Chairman, and the fire chief, Mr. Bradbury, is here as well to address this issue if need be. Very simply, we are one of approximately 290 other communities whose fire chief is exempt from civil service. There are only 64 right now in the Commonwealth that act under the guise of civil service for their fire chief. By being able to appoint a fire chief without the constraints of civil service, you certainly broaden your search for the best possible professional candidate. That said, from a very practical point of view, we have a dilemma. And that is, under civil service rules and regulations, you have to call for an exam. In this case, when the last fire chief, Fire Chief Stewart, retired in February of 2008, the deputy fire chief, now Chief Bradbury, was appointed on an acting basis. Frankly, I consider him the fire chief in every way, but under civil service statute, he is an acting fire chief until he goes through the civil service process, which means a test. The test was called for this month, in March of 2009. In fact, there was a labor action prompted by the firefighters' union, saying that we should have already had an exam, but obviously, that wasn't possible since the former chief left in February. And we agreed with the firefighters' union and with civil service that we would, in fact, call for an exam at the next available time. And that time was from March of 2009. In order to give a promotional exam so that you can select from within a department at least four members of that department, of the eligible offices in this case, who could become fire chief, would have to apply, make application for the examination. In this case, only one person did that, and that was Chief Bradbury himself. None of the other, I think, seven eligible candidates, in this case, eight total, and you needed four, applied for the position. As a result, the exam was canceled. And so what happens now is an exam is now going to be held in March of 2010. The only difference is that now all firefighters within the department are eligible for this exam. And frankly, I don't want to leave this position to chance, although I fully respect the firefighters. It's very possible that the top three scorers on an exam, and that's where your choice is limited to, could in fact all be firefighters who have not served in any supervisory, management, or command position within the fire department. And I don't think the appointment directly of a firefighter to the position of chief without having been a lieutenant or a deputy is in the best interest of the town of Wilmington. And therefore, frankly, I believe one way to ensure that we have the best management at the top of this most important department is to exempt this position from civil service. Again, no ill-reflection, but I would suspect that most people would agree that a firefighter should not suddenly become the chief of the department based upon a 100 multiple-choice test. And that's why I make no secret that I want to be able to appoint Fire Chief Bradbury in the permanent position of chief. And the way to do that is to exempt this, or the way to ensure that is to exempt this position from civil service. Again, no ill-reflection on Chief Bradbury either. I'm fully confident that he could take and pass that exam. But once that list is established, if something happened to Chief Bradbury, something good, he was suddenly promoted to chief marshal in the Obama administration, for example, we would then have to select the candidates who are next in line. And that could very well be a firefighter as opposed to a lieutenant or a deputy. And the fact that no lieutenant or deputy has applied for this exam is telling enough for me.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes?
I just had a couple of questions. One was that there is an option where you could have an open test. Is that correct? Where it would include other firefighters from other communities? That would broaden the search as opposed to, which is one of the statements you made initially?
That is an option, but I'm not sure if that option comes into play. Where is the chief? I'm not sure if that option comes into play immediately, but that would essentially be what you would do if you exempted from civil service. I mean, I would have the opportunity to select from any firefighter, except it wouldn't be an exam.
Any other question I had was, I understand that four people total have to sign up for the test, or do they have to take?
All they have to do is sign up for the test.
So if they signed up, and only one person took the test, and that person would pass the test and be chief?
That's right. Under the guidelines of civil service, though, I believe a town manager could make the assertion that there was not enough of a choice. But in fact, this town has chosen in the past when there's just been two or one candidate, as in the case was with Chief Bradbury, when he was the only candidate to pass the deputy chief exam. I felt he was qualified. And certainly, if four people signed up for the exam and Chief Bradbury was the only one to take the exam and pass it, he would be the chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yeah, Bill?
What would be the difference of the police chief and the fire chief, one being non-civil service and one being civil service appointments? Why would you go with just one?
Because of the circumstances we find ourselves in. I must tell you, and it's no, it's no surprise, I'm sure, even to Chief Begonis, who's an outstanding chief and is a person that I would select. I think the town ought also to have the opportunity to select a police chief exempt from the constraints of civil service. But I'm a practical person, and I think that in this case, there is an obvious need to do so. In the case of the police department, there are a number of people who have consistently taken promotional exams. There has never been a want for people to take exams at the chief, deputy, or lieutenant level. In fact, when I've done interviews at those levels, I've had several very, very good candidates, as I did the last time, when I appointed the chief chief, or when I appointed him deputy, and when we've gone through other processes. So I think that there has been a demonstration at this point that there are supervisors who are willing to step up to the plate. If the same situation, if it was an analogous situation in the police department, I would be recommending the same thing. And the other point is, I don't want anybody to look at this as any kind of a power grab. In fact, I'm making it clear that it would be Chief Bradbury. And, you know, I suspect that by the time somebody is appointing the next police chief or fire chief in the town of Wilmington, it'll be somebody other than me.
Any other comments or questions? Next, Article 31. To see if the voters of the town of Wilmington will vote to create a program to reduce a massive local government wasteful spending by creating a program to be called the Wasteful Spending Reduction and Property Tax Credit Program. The program shall be administered by the board of selectmen. The program shall give any property taxpayer to the town of Wilmington a $10,000 property tax credit if he, she, or it can provide a successful job lead or any other job of equal or greater pay, excluding benefits and pension, to that a nonessential employee chooses to take instead of being laid off. This is a rather long article, and is the petitioner here? Petitioner is not here. I do have a question for legal counsel. Is this a valid warrant article? No? Sure, sweet. Thank you. Article 32. To see if the voters of the town of Wilmington will vote at the annual town meeting to require the town manager to reduce residential property taxes by amount equal to 20% by whatever means is necessary, or take any other action related thereto. Is the petitioner here? No? Again, town council. Is this a valid? No? Thank you. Article 33. To see if the voters of the town of Wilmington will vote at the 2009 annual town meeting for the elimination of teacher tenure provisions from any future teacher contracts throughout the entire Wilmington public school system, or take any other action related thereto. Is the petitioner here? No? Again, town council. Is this a valid warrant article? No. Thank you. Article 36. To see if the town of Wilmington, by and through the Water and Sewer Department, will vote to take over the care, custody, control, and maintenance of a certain sanitary sewer pumping station currently located on a portion of the property now known as and numbered 92 West Street, Wilmington, Mass. And with said property being described in the assesses' records as map 73, parcel 53, or take any other action related thereto. Is the petitioner here? No. Any comments or questions on this? And that looks like it's the end of the articles that we have to go through. I thank you tonight for your participation. Entertainer motion, yes, Dick.
I'd just like to make a comment. Sometimes when people are home observing this exercise we go through, they wonder why there aren't more questions and so forth, maybe in the part of the finance committee or the planning board. But for the people that are watching us at home, each one of these departments is represented by the fine people in this town that have these jobs, have gone through hours of discussion, presentation, justification, whatever you might want to call it, so that when we were all done, everybody had a pretty good handle on the makeup of the town and what's required to run it. And that's a compliment to the town manager who prepares everybody quite well.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments or questions? Entertainer motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Adjourned.